Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We will now call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Hornbuckle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Excuse me. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann. Councilman Hart.
Present.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampi.
President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present of the city council and everybody else that works for the city.
Okay. Great. And I think we have helped the city in this room. Big proud tonight. Okay, we have no special announcements or presentations, so we will now move on to comments on the agenda. We'll move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's agenda. Questions may be asked, responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. Comments on the agenda. Is there anyone on my left? Comments on the agenda. Is there anyone on my right? Yes or yes?
Excuse me.
Yes. If you want it, you got to come up to the lectern and please state your name and your city.
Hi, Tim Furlong. Is there a copy of the agenda?
Yes, they are out there in the vestibule.
Okay.
There's...
Yeah, I was just out there and there wasn't any there.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking.
I tried to find the second one and it was seen inside.
Or maybe I grabbed the wrong one, but I like to have one before.
We printed 50, so there should be some out there.
Okay. Is there anyone else comment on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we will close public comment on the agenda and move the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Any changes to consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman.
I'm not with my agenda right now. I would like to move item D to new business.
I will support that. I'm letting him catch up. One sec.
You said D, David?
Yes, D is a David.
And I'm sorry, who supported it?
Uh, myself.
Thank you.
Resolution.
No, you can call for dissent.
All right. Is there any dissent on that? Any dissent?
Just catching discussion.
Oh, sorry. Is there any discussion on the motion to move item D to new business? Any discussion?
I can explain.
Yes, Councilman.
The reason why I'm actually suggesting that item D, moving it off of the consent calendar to new business is because it is new business. And it actually showed up on the agenda today, this morning, which is happens, but at the same time that meant that the public did not get notified, a proper notice, to be able to look at it. And when it's on the consent calendar, there's no opportunity to discuss it and there's no opportunity for discussion. So, that's my reason to move it off to the business.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Back to the consent calendar. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, consent calendar passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held May 20, 2024. Approval of minutes of the budget study session held May 20, 2024. Last item approved on the consent calendar today. Approval of bid for Westland Historic Village Park Paint Project. Administration recommended ER Painting LLC in an amount not to exceed $7,821. Moving to payment of voucher.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any dis... What? Oh, Hornbuckle, I'm sorry. Oh, you both said it? Okay. Uh, Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Is there any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Moving to new business. Item one, adoption of 2024-2025 proposed budget as well as the 2026 and 2027. Um, wait, what did we call them?
Estimated.
Thank you. Estimated budgets. The 2024 to 2030 capital improvement plan and the spreading of the millage over 2024, 2025. A public hearing was held May 6, 2024.
Is there a motion?
Support.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Is there any additional discussion?
Okay.
Councilman?
Pro Tem, I yield.
I would like to move to delay this to the next meeting.
So you're making a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Support.
There's a motion to postpone new business item one till the next council meeting. And there is support for it. Motion by Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilman Hart. Do you have any discussion on the motion?
Uh, no.
While I yield mine, the attorney is trying to...
Yes. Attorney counsel.
Thank you. Uh, council, I remind you that in the Charter, Section 11.4, Title Adoption of Budget, provides that the council shall, honored before the first Monday in June, adopt a budget for the ensuing fiscal year and shall, by resolution designated, the sums to be raised by taxation for general purposes of the city and for the payment of indebtedness. Provided, however, that failure to act within the time within herein shall not invalidate any tax levy.
Okay. Councilwoman, you read your letter?
I did. Uh, the attorney has answered my question as to our timeliness on this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have... Okay. Uh, Attorney counsel, so based on the language read in the Charter, that does require us at this meeting, given that this is the first meeting in June to adopt the budget.
That's requ... That's right. The language is, "The council shall honor before the first Monday in June."
And then to the finance team, we also have state reporting requirements, do we not, that we have to submit the budget in a timely fashion to the state of Michigan, a balanced budget?
Through the chair, um, some of the things with regards to the millage rates, yes, that has to be turned over to the Wayne County Department of Equalization. Along with that, though, the millage rates, um, we need at least a couple weeks for our printer to print them. So if the millage rates are not passed, um, usually they're at this meeting, it could delay the mailing of the tax bills. So...
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further? Yes, Pro Tem.
Um, in terms of, excuse me, the budget, a big concern right now is operating in the red and having to pull money from our general fund to balance the budget. So looking at that, um, I guess my concern is we're using savings to cover our budget.
Okay.
So just to be clear to the city attorney, we have to vote on this today, but we do not have to essentially adopt.
So let me, uh, through the chair, let me read the language again. It's not, "The council shall, honored before the first Monday in June, adopt a budget for the ensuing fiscal year and shall, by resolution designated, the sums to be raised by taxation for general purposes going to the issue that Mrs. Smith raised." So, uh, under the Charter, the language is, "You shall do that today," because it's the first Monday meeting in June, uh, and adopt a budget.
Council President.
Here.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to turn over the microphone to our finance director, Steve Smith. He had another, uh, another comment for the council.
Good. Director Smith.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair. So with regards to fund balance, um, as council knows, there's a couple different buckets of fund balance. There's unassigned fund balance, and then there's other buckets called assigned, restricted, or reserved. So in the originally proposed budget that was given to council on April 1st, we were increasing unassigned fund balance by over 870,000. With the changes that council made, uh, over the last few weeks, the unassigned fund balance is still projected to go up, 554,000. So I think where, um, the overall fund balance is, um, subject to go down by 261,000, and I think that's what council maybe was focusing on, but that's, um, overall fund balance. The unassigned is still projected to go up. Um, so the assigned fund balance, which are, um, like fund balances reserved for expenditures or maybe Dan can help me out, are the other categories. But the unassigned, just for clarification, is still projected to go up over half a million dollars. So I don't know if that helps what your, helps you with your concern or not, but...
And if I could...
Here.
Thank you. If I could clarify to the council, that's the part of the fund balance that's affected by cuts per department. So we've worked really hard to find savings across the board. Uh, there were large spending increases in the 2023-24 budget as it pertains to police and fire wages. Uh, those were tie-barred to, uh, the mayor's pay plan. So, uh, there's a lot of salary increases that we're trying to make up for here. These huge investments in police and fire that we're working on together cost a lot of money, uh, but we're still, um, increasing that unassigned fund balance, which is really important. We're maintaining a $12 million rainy day fund, which is over 10% best practice per the state of Michigan for our city budget. So we're working really hard to be fiscally responsible here. And I would also add that if the council wants to find more savings, I'm absolutely willing to, uh, schedule a study session in the next three to four weeks. We can sit down and work on a budget amendment that we can adopt right away when this budget takes effect in July. Um, absolutely working, willing to work with the council on anything they want to do here as we have throughout the four or five study sessions that we had regarding this budget. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And that was, uh, Director Block or Director Smith, whichever wants to take this question. We can come back at a later date with a budget amendment to make reductions in other areas of this budget, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. With regards to the motion, any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent?
I have a discussion.
So based off of what the Charter says, if this motion passes, then it's, we can't pass this to postpone, we have to pass this today.
Right.
So this motion should probably be withdrawn.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right. Motion has been withdrawn, and I will just say, uh, with regards to this, we will work with the administration, if council has additional questions, to, um, talk about what other areas we may want to look at within the budget and come back at a later date with the study session, any budget amendment that is on the list. We are back on to the original motion with regards to the budget. Councilwoman Baumann.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion as well as the resolution documents to clearly reflect that we are only adopting fiscal year '24 to '25. Currently reading in them, it actually says that we are adopting fiscal years '25, '26, and '27, and all the way through... Oh.
Go ahead. No, continue.
No, I need a support.
Oh, no.
For amendment?
You're making, you're telling us what the amendment is, and then we'll say whether that was a...
So the amendment actually is to change the motion as well, or the, yeah, the motion and the documents to reflect fiscal year '24, '25.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there is support. So to be clear, the language will... How do you want this to stay agreeing?
If I may?
Yes.
When I read the item, I did read it as 2024-2025 proposed budget and with the help of the mayor, estimated 2026 and '27. The soon-to-be-attached resolution has already been modified, and folks were notified of that earlier in the day. Administratively, everything is in place. And during our conversation earlier today when you called me, I, I thought that I had explained that, but if I didn't, I hope that my explanation now might allow you to have confidence that what we will be adopting, if it is adopted, is a 2024-2025 proposed budget with an estimated budget of 2026 through '27 attached to it. The Charter only allows a one-year budget.
I would actually like it to only reflect the one year, similar to past years. So I looked at previous minutes and agendas and even the resolutions in past years, and they only mention one year. They do not talk about the estimated years beyond that. It's in the document, the supporting document, that shows the spread of years ahead, but in the actual documents that are being adopted by the council, these other years only have one year. So I really appreciate what, I do appreciate through the chair, but what the clerk is saying. And I don't see an email that sees, that shows me that anything got changed because the document I'm looking at still shows, um, that we are adopting three years. And I admit, just not comfortable with that.
Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Yep.
Would your uneasiness and unreadiness be satisfied by receiving that email? If we could request that from, um, through the chair to the finance department?
What I'm actually, to, yes, so what I'm actually voting on, yes, that it, you know, and not having estimated years, just one year referenced.
So just to be clear, Councilwoman, you want the estimated language removed as well?
Yes. I, and like I said, I did look at previous years. I went through, I did my due diligence, I looked at previous years on how the agenda was written, how the motion and the resolution was written, and all of them reference just one fiscal year, just, just like the Charter does.
Okay. Attorney counsel.
I yield to the council member.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, through the chair to my colleague, uh, based off what the clerk has said, based off of what the attorney has said, I, I hear your motion. I just, why? I mean, what's the concern?
Clarification for people who might not be here in this room or watching the, watching, but they might go online and see what we passed and see what we resolved. And if, I just want clear, really clear language and asked, and that we did not have any, because we didn't even, because even in our study sessions, we didn't even discuss the other years. So I don't want to talk about an estimated budget. I appreciate that it's in there and they'll be listed there, but we did not discuss. In fact, when we talked about future years, we said, "We're only looking at this year." And I, it's just the language.
Okay. I just, again, it's estimated. We said it's estimated. Clerk said it's estimated. The attorney said so as well. So I just, I don't know, and the record will reflect that. I mean, it sounds like a motion, I don't know what the end result is. I just don't know. I just don't get it, I guess. So that's it, Council President. I just...
Pro Tem.
Um, through the chair to my colleague, just to clarify, so the estimate is used for planning purposes. Typically, we look at where we're trending. So based on that, you just don't feel comfortable with potential trending or proposed budgets for the future? Is that what you're saying?
No, of course we're going to look at...
Yeah.
Of course we're going to look at other years.
But just having it in one document.
I'm just clarifying, because if somebody looks at this, this is their money. If they say that I'm actually making es... I mean, it's just, what am I passing? The estimates are there. I'm not denying that they're going to be there, and I want us to look at years ahead. But in the language of the motion and the document, why is, I guess, so let me ask this, why can't we just have it discussed one year in the motion and the proposal or the resolution?
Attorney counsel.
Thank you. Through the chair, just, uh, I want to confirm that, uh, the Charter requires an annual budget. So as a budgeting tool, projecting out three years or five years or 10 years, if you wanted, um, the Charter's still going to require you every, this council, every year to adopt a budget. I would also point out that in the resolution in the one, six, whereas it does say proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 and estimated budgets for '26 and '27, um, I don't know if this makes, would make it more palatable to the councilwoman, but in the second, be it resolved, uh, it says the city council adopts revised budget expenditures for fiscal 2025, you could insert an estimated budget for 2026 and 2027 as stated above. I don't know if that clears it up for or not, but you do, this council does have to adopt a budget under Charter annually, every year. This does not do it for year two and year three. It's a planning document.
Which is why I wanted that clarified. And the document I'm seeing does not, does not talk about estimated, so I guess I'm not seeing it.
Council President.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Um, you and I spoke on Friday about this concern you had, um, and I think my suggestion to address your concern that you agreed with on Friday, just correct me if I'm wrong, was to ask your colleagues to change the language on the agenda, because the resolution is the way he just stated it, which is what you're approving, but I think you, your concern was what appears on the agenda. Is that correct?
So yes, we talked on Friday, and I was okay changing the agenda. However, when I looked in the resolution deeper, and again, I'm not seeing an updated document, so I guess I want to clarify that the resolution no longer says that we resolved to adopt fiscal years '25, '26, '27, because that's how it was reading in the agenda, or I mean, the resolution.
I'm, I'm sorry. The revised resolution, which has not been distributed...
Okay.
It will, I made notice today to the finance department, they acknowledged, we met in my office briefly, the revised resolution includes verbiage that states estimated 2026 and 2027.
And I thought I heard you say...
In all ca... in all portions of it.
Okay. And I thought you, I heard you say that had already been distributed, so I'm looking, trying to find where this is...
It was administratively exchanged.
It will be distributed.
Yeah.
It will be, yes, Councilwoman.
Um, so again, per my previous, um, inquiry to you through the chair, if you had receipt of the resolution with the updated verbiage indicating that the other two years are estimated, would that settle your unreadiness?
Along with the motion and the resolution being completely clear, yes. The motion itself needs to say, needs to reflect the same.
It did.
Okay.
It's not updated. Okay. So for clarification's sake, the council did not receive the updated resolution that indicates that the additional two years of the projected budget instrument that goes from 2024 until 2027 was not delivered. It was done administratively, so for the, the good councilwoman, she did not receive that, nor did any of my colleagues, nor myself. So that would, that's kind of where the catch is. So...
So what I'm hearing is, to make clear for the public who are going to be watching and who are here, is as, as, and I didn't question this, we are only adopting a fiscal year budget for '24 to '25, not a three-year budget. We're not adopting a three-year budget. We are obviously, it's, it's, I'm so glad we're looking out beyond this year to say, what do we see, things are happening, what are things that could happen, and making sure that we're kind of making, looking, make sure we're going to cover things, but it's only one year. And with that, I will be happy to withdraw my amendment, um, bearing that we will see the updated documents and what actually shows up online will also be very clear that it's only a one-year fiscal budget in matching the Charter.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The city clerk has sent an email, as you just heard, ding, and also the meeting...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, so we do have it now and ready. Thank you to the city clerk. And Councilwoman, so you know, the meeting minutes, when they are reflected to be voted on at the next meeting from this meeting, will reflect the changes that you're asking for...
Thank you.
And not list the language of a three-year budget, but rather the '24, '25 fiscal year budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And further, if I can, I will this evening send council a draft of the minutes that will be completed following this meeting. I'll send everyone that tonight.
Thank you.
So is the motion withdrawn?
Yes. My amendment is done.
Thank you.
Back to the original motion, new business item one. I do have discussion on this, um, just briefly on a couple of things. Number one, um, we will be working with the administration to actually have a discussion about what specific changes itemized and given to the council are going to be made when it comes to, uh, use of unassigned fund balance and assigned fund balance. So we will make sure, um, that that happens, because I know that there is some heartburn dipping into fund balance from, it sounds like quite a few people here on council. Um, so that is something that we will, um, be taken care of and... So that is something that we will be taking care of and getting from the administration. And again, potentially having a study session on if it requires council deliberation on individual items that we want to discuss. So that is what I have on the new business item one with the budget. Pro Tem.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we just want to make sure that this information is given to us. I mean, I don't want to be bullied into a budget. The mayor confronted me and said, you went on a spending spree last year. Why would you not pass this budget? And I find that really offensive, when we ended up, as a council, discussing it, and then the deputy mayor was freaking out last year when we went into the fund balance. So we're asking questions, and then all of a sudden, we're being threatened. I don't think that's fair.
I'm sorry you feel that way. Is there any, yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. I did have some reservations. Some people know, the council's aware. So we met last, last week, right? Was it last week? Last week. Running all together. Yeah. So we found a couple revenue lines that we just didn't think might have been too realistic. So we, the council worked together with the administration and kind of reduced those revenue lines, about $318,000 that, you know, the council just didn't really think, it was far too optimistic, and we just figured, we'd rather be a little bit more conservative and back that $318,000 off. And if they do realize it, then we're all the better for it. And if we don't realize it, then we budget it appropriately. My disappointment came when, when we gave them that, that little tiny haircut. And just so we're clear, the $318,000 off and $82 million was point zero zero three eight percent. So a little point zero zero three eight percent. I was disappointed that it was thrown right against the fund balance instead of just kind of taking a look at different departments and saying, all right, maybe you take a little $5 cut here, a little, you know, and I was kind of disappointed about that. But I did meet with Steve and Dan today, and I do appreciate kind of the tight timeframe they had. So I've, I'm agreeing, I'm going to support the budget today with the commitment that we're going to go back after we pass this so that we're in accord, or operating in accordance with our charter. Then just try to find a little bit smart budgeting to go ahead and bring that back in line and bring our $56,000 projected fund balance contribution back in line. So that's where it was at. But Dan and Steve, I do, I do appreciate the short timeframe you had, and it was kind of hard to do that. So I will look forward to seeing something from you guys in the administration about kind of where you guys think and the administration thinks it's best to put that. I just want to go down and say, everybody gets a point zero zero three eight percent cut on their line. So that's just not, that's not realistic, you know, so. But again, I will support it, knowing that the commitment has been made by the mayor and the administration that we're going to go ahead and bring that budget in line with where we think it should be. So, thank you, Council President.
Okay. Thank you. Pro Tem.
Through the chair to the administration, when would this meeting take place, or when do you have it proposed?
We'd have to work with the council president to schedule it, just like other study sessions. But like I said before, in the next three to four weeks.
So we're, we're looking at July, then?
Before July 1st.
Yeah, because the budget goes into effect July 1st. So I think we'd want to get it in place, having the meeting before July 1st.
That way you could adopt a budget amendment to make the changes you're comfortable with at that point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any, yes, Councilman.
I'm going to say, I'll be supporting this, as you see, the mayor has been working with us, coming from far trips away, late at night, making changes for us, and he's also agreeing to make changes before the budget go in place. So his word is to get this situated and work with us. So I will be supporting this budget as well. Thank you.
Any additional discussion from the council? Did you have some? I do have one additional item. So, you know, I will be in support of this budget, and I want to make sure that, you know, we've had four study sessions on this, and I want to make sure that council gets their questions, concerns answered. I know it has been a common critique of prior administrations that sometimes we want something, sometimes we have a question, we don't always get the answer. Every administration should be held to the same standard, and whether it's this one or any previous administration, I think we want all of our questions answered, and we want things addressed. I appreciate the work from Steve, Dan, the administration that went into this budget. It was, you know, a long, arduous task, as it always is each and every year. I appreciate some of the things that this budget is really, you know, attempting to do, right-size our building department, improve the customer service of the building department, most of all with Roger. I know it's been, you know, probably one of the biggest, you know, complaints that we hear from residents and from, you know, vendors and petitioners out in the communities, you know, dealing with our building department, getting that right size, you know, making the customer service better there is going to be a big part of it. The support for public safety that continues on from last year, yes, in last year's budget, we did pass a sizable, you know, contractual increase for our police department. We knew that we had a significant problem that I think we all wanted to address last year with regards to officers looking to jump ship and go to other communities, and we wanted to prevent that. There was also a sizable tie bar with regards to director pay, some director pay, and the deputy chief that would have been nice to address last year. We didn't do that, but I think we had a, you know, a pretty significant reason for why we wanted to adopt that contract that we did. And that did eat into a lot of one-time money. This budget continues the support for public safety, not only with the contract that we did last year for PD, but with bringing firefighters over from the SAFER grant to make sure that they are full-time employees, not just working on a, you know, three-year SAFER grant and wondering what's next after that. We still have a ways to go with that, as we still have firefighters that are working on the SAFER grant. But I'm confident that, you know, this administration has made a commitment to public safety. The council has made a commitment to public safety that we, we want to fix that. And I think that, you know, with this budget and moving forward, there will be more revenue coming in from marijuana, once we get some of these marijuana facilities hopefully opened up here in the city of Westland. That will provide additional revenue in your budget as we move forward. And I think that will be something that will make more folks on council happier when buildings and facilities are actually in operation and contributing revenue into the budget as well. Is there any additional discussion?
Any.
Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Roll call.
Counselwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Counselwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item one A. Adoption of Prepared Resolution to Proclaim the Month of June 2024, Pride Month in the city of Westland.
Did you want a motion?
Yeah.
So moved?
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampe, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Thank you, Council President. So I thought this was really important, that we move this and bring it on our agenda. There was a question why it got brought back to the agenda late. Just to give a little bit of context on this and why it did arrive late, is that we were under the assumption that Pride Month was a blanket resolution. So we were going back, looking at agendas, and we sent it over, and unfortunately, it didn't get added in time. So my apologies that it didn't get added, but it's really important that we celebrate Pride Month here in Westland, reflecting on the resilience and the strength and courage of the LGBTQ+ community. So I brought this forward, having it on the agenda. I know that there's an event that's going to be taking place later this month, which I hope that everyone can join us. There is a flag out in City Hall that, you know, I hope that we can raise a flag, other communities do the same thing. But I strive that Westland is, is a community that promotes kindness, empathy, not just June, but every day. So I was really, I was really happy to bring this forward, and I hope that my colleagues would support it.
Any discussion from this quarter? Counselwoman?
Yes. So I am not going to support this resolution, and I know some people might be surprised, and some people might not be. The reason for it is, has nothing to do with, well, I don't want anyone to feel like they don't have a place in our community. Unfortunately, when you, sometimes when you actually segregate a group out, you're actually causing problems to others. And I'm just, I actually, I will say what I, one of the reasons why I was concerned, there are a couple of reasons why I was concerned that it brought forward late like this, was because I had actually asked for an agenda item on Friday and was told I couldn't have it on, and then this showed up on the consent calendar rather than the, rather than the new business. I actually had intended to put forward a resolution because I do think that it's very important that we really understand the definitions of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that we really think about this. And so I am not going to support this one tonight. I think that there is, are other ways that we can take care of this. I think it's great that we're having a multicultural fair coming up in the, later in the year, that we are actually going to be truly including anyone who wants to be in it. And that's going to be a great opportunity. So I just want to share, and I'm putting it on record, that I will not be supporting this resolution.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? I have discussion. So in 2021, we, this council, well, not this exact council, but council with many of the people up here, we had passed a resolution denoting that June 2021 was Pride Month. And as my colleague said, Pro Tem Sampe, we had thought that the resolution was blanket for June, and thereafter it was not. So that's why we're re-adopting language this year to declare June 2024 Pride Month. Pride is so much more than what some people define it to be. Pride is not just your right to live your life and love who you love, how you want. Pride is an acknowledgement of the generations and centuries of discrimination in this country and all around the world to LGBTQI individuals. Not only have folks in the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer, pan, questioning communities been denied the right to marry whom they love and live their life as they choose and see fit to be happy to, they've been denied employment rights in the workplace. They've been denied promotional opportunities. They've been paid less than some of their straight contemporaries and counterparts in the workplace. They've been denied parental and adoption rights as well. So when we talk about celebrating pride here in Westland and across the country, it isn't simply just a gay marriage issue. It is a really all-encompassing issue to show all of the contributions of the LGBTQIA community and to recognize the many forms of discrimination and bigotry and ways in which LGBTQI individuals were oppressed and held back. And so some people may look at this and say, well, you're giving a certain group special status. No, we're honoring a group of individuals who was long oppressed. And I often hear, well, what about having, you know, straight Pride Month? Well, that, that's every month. I don't know that people were ever told, who were heterosexual, straight individuals, that they could not marry whom they love, at least white, straight, heterosexual individuals. So we have lots of months that acknowledge lots of, you know, marginalized and oppressed communities to recognize the wrong that was done to them, whether it's Pride Month, or it's Black History Month, or it's Hispanic Heritage Month. It's not simply about celebrating one individual thing. There is a whole collective of things that we are acknowledging, wrongs that we are trying to right so that we can move forward as a more diverse and accepting and loving and caring society. And so support for Pride Month is so much more than just, you know, it's an acknowledgement for gay marriage. There is a long struggle that people, well in advance of me, have been fighting for years. And it is about acknowledging decades and centuries of struggle within the LGBTQIA community and knowing that moving forward, we can do better. And we will be accepting, and we will be loving and compassionate and caring to all of our neighbors, including those like myself, like many here in Westland, in the LGBTQIA community. Thank you. Counselwoman. Oh, your light was off. It was. Yes.
wonderfully stated, Council President. I have just one question, if I may, to the maker. When you had the opportunity just to declare June as Pride Month collectively as opposed to annually, because I know we've done that for some of our other resolutions, like our Autism and Disability Month, is there, was there procedural reasons why? Or can we make that adjustment so that this is stamped in time, that we recognize June as Pride Month in the city of Westland every year?
Thank you, Councilwomen. So there was not a reasoning, essentially because we used, or we brought forward the resolution from 2021. I don't think, you know, if we, if we want to make it a blanket resolution for June in the city of Westland every year, I don't think there's an issue with that. But we brought that forward because in June 2021, that was brought, exactly, it was brought forward, we raised the flag, and I wanted to make sure that, again, it was brought, brought forward. So, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Sent, okay. Roll call.
Counselwoman Baumann.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Counselwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the councils shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or any other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will stop, will the speakers, will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my left? Yes. You stay.
Ruth Dale, Westland. See what happens when you miss council for a month? You get to be first. My, tonight, my history lesson tonight is about Annapolis Park. Annapolis Park subdivision, Annapolis Park Sub Number Two and Annapolis Park Sub Number Three, consist of 354 single-family modern ranch homes. And the reason I'm here is to say, it has been, they have been in existence for 70 years this year. The subs are bounded by Middle Belt on the east, Van Born on the south, Henry, Henry, Henry Rough on the west, and Annapolis Avenue on the north. The first two homes built were models, I think, like 1954, and they fronted onto Middle Belt. Annapolis Park has a Michigan Historical Marker on the west side of Middle Belt, Middle Belt at Hanover, and thanks to Kim back here, who read the marker text for me a few weeks ago. Annapolis Park has been listed on the national, on Michigan Historical Marker, and it's listed on the National Register of Historical Sites, and that was in May 2005. In Allahuain County, Michigan, there are only 371 listings. Norwain made the list in 2013. 2013, Eloise is not, and they certainly should be, on this prestigious list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone on my right? Public comment. Anyone on my left? One sec. Sorry. We'll get you, we'll get you next, sir. Yes, sir.
[inaudible].
My name is Dan McGee. I'm the husband, married to the love of my life, Julie, for 28 years. She's seated right back here behind me. Together, we have three incredible children. And by the grace of God, they are married to three great spouses for which we are very grateful. In fact, my son has been serving in the United States Navy for the last seven years, and I can remember like it was yesterday, the day that I drove him over to the recruitment center on Ford Road, and we walked in and we sat down with a Navy recruiter. And the result of that was my son ended up in the U.S. Navy. We are Westlanders. We love our city. We love the people of our city, all of them. We love our neighbors. We pay taxes in our city. We shop here in our city. We eat in the restaurants of this city. In short, we care deeply about this city. We even desire to see it flourish in every imaginable way, as I know all of you do here in the council and the mayor and his administration, in which that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight because I love this city, and that's why I've taken some time to actually write down and have some prepared words to say to you, council members. And my hope and my prayer is that these words might be considered by you and that they would be considered in light of the spirit in which they are being brought to you. And that is from one who is invested in the city and one who definitely cares about its success. But I realize I'm wading into a discussion where I am definitely standing in this room right now as strongly probably as a minority opinion on the subject before us. And I am here to say to you tonight kindly, but very directly, I do not believe that we should be, as a city, recognizing June as Pride Month. And furthermore, I do not believe we should be raising the pride flag on the flagpole or raising it up within our city buildings. And I, I want to explain to you why I think that, okay? I, I want to start by saying this. I stand before you tonight as a man who has made a lot of mistakes in his life. I am a man who has experienced a lot of God's grace as well. I am not one who is pointing the finger at others and making judgments as if, you know, I have it all together and everybody else around me has it all wrong. I'm just a guy who has been learning as life goes on and often learning through the mistakes that I've made. But I am here to suggest to you tonight that you recognize that the flag and this month, and particularly the flag itself, it is unnecessarily divisive and incendiary. You say, well, why? Why do you say that? Because it's divisive.
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes are up. Your time is up.
So can I finish my comments?
No, your time is up, unfortunately. It's three minutes for public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's Tim Furlong. I live at 7710 Lear Court in the beautiful Westland. I'm a resident. I also serve in Westland. Love Westland, love where it's at. I love where we're going with Westland. I'm the second one that would do it. First of all, I don't understand how this got put on an agenda, as you were speaking earlier today, on an agenda, when you tried to get something on and it didn't, and then this just showed up on the agenda today. I got a call late, like 15 minutes before this meeting, and had, otherwise I wouldn't have been in shorts. But I just came immediately to this meeting because it just looks like some, some kind of shahannagins are going on with something, just getting slipped onto an agenda and just being put out. First of all, it just doesn't look right. This is the administration that we do things by the book, and that just doesn't seem right. But second of all, I don't think we should be political, here's our flags. These are our flags right here.
Amen.
These are our flags right out there.
Yes, sir.
We don't need to be put in all different kinds of flags and, and, believe me, I'm a Christian guy. I believe that everybody has their own rights, but I also believe in the Bible. And the one thing I think the constituents of this Westland, this should have been in a study session where we could have talked about it a little bit more, or you guys could have not just slipped in the day, the day of. It just doesn't look right. And I don't think we, and then you, I asked for the agenda because I didn't have one, and I should have had one. But then when I got to the agenda, I, I probably should have raised my hand because I wanted to bring this up before you guys even voted on this matter. It's important to me, very important. And I don't think we gave any considerate to any of the constituents in this town, in Westland, when you put something in, you just slip sheeted it in and put it on the agenda impassive. That's not the proper way to do things. And it seems like we're behind the eight ball on a couple of things. But I don't want to go there. I don't think this should be, we shouldn't be putting any other flags up there. This is a city of, this is Westland. Put our Westland flag, put, put the American flag on there. That's what we need to do. This is what we just saluted to, this, this flag, the United States of America. What's going to be next? What kind of flags? What kind of next month? And I know we've done things for different months and different things, and, and, and I understand that. And we're trying to be a diversified community, and I do understand that. But what's going to be next when we start changing this stuff, especially the way it was done? This is ridiculous. This is, this should never happen like this. The constituents of this, of Westland should have known about this instead of, was it even on the webpage? Was it?
Thank you, sir. Your time's up. Yes, it was posted on the agenda online when it was updated.
Today?
Yes.
Today?
Yes.
Today?
Yes, your time is up. Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. My name is Macy Gaines. I stand before city council and the mayor today because I'm running for Wayne County.
We don't allow campaigning from the dais.
I did not know that.
Yeah, sorry.
I did hear the restrictions, but I didn't hear that part.
With public comment as a part of our policies and procedures, we don't allow individuals to campaign from the dais.
Oh, no problem. Sorry about that. I didn't hear that.
If you have any other public comment, you're welcome to, to share.
Absolutely. Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tony Grek. I'm from Westland in 7705 Lear Court. Tim's a neighbor of mine, and I like the neighborhood. But I can't understand why you guys make it hard on yourself when you had years passed do exactly what they were talking about, and then the other gentleman about the flag. And we don't need another flag. I'm just asking for more trouble. So anyways, I agree with having the United States flag and the Michigan flag and not yet.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Public comment on my right? Right.
Well, I don't want to get into the negatives about the pride thing. I think it's, you know, each is their own, and people have rights that don't matter as long as they ain't bothering anybody. So, anyway, I want to talk about some positive stuff. So, anyway, time is approaching. It's called like the wheelchairs, two wheelchairs on the 13th. I believe it's from two to seven. I just wanted to bring that up here. Also, I just took some notes. I haven't been here for a couple of times. Been at the DD council because I am a DD member now, the Disability Council member. So we talk about policies and stuff like that. And I really like it. It's good to be a part of that. Anyway, so also been at a peer conference, peers recoveries, peers me all together. Means everyone should be inclusive, and that's what, that's what it's all about. And I'm really strong believe about people. How would you, how would people feel if they step on their toes and say, well, you can't do this, or you can't do that? Be happy for, got to be happy with yourself to be happy with other people. And my biggest thing is respect. And my other thing is mental health. You know, I was listening to a person last night on TikTok about mental health. A lot of times people might say, oh, I'm okay, but they're not. But it's good to reach out to your loved ones and just check in with them and see how they're doing. I just wanted to share that too. So anyway, where my name tag tonight, I'm well-known into the community, and I'm going to keep advocating. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else on my left? Public comment?
Yes.
Yes, Derek.
My name is Derek Davis. I sit on a couple of commissions in the city. I live in the city with my husband. Many years, we bought our house here in 2020. I'd like to say that all my neighbors, they love us. All my neighbors love that my husband and I live in the city. So I'm not exactly sure where the gentleman behind me keeps saying that the constituents of this city don't want me here, because the people within this city would tell me otherwise. I think that it's a great city to live in. We feel welcome. We feel loved. We feel respected, not by them, but by everybody else. And I think council and anybody else who's listening, and anybody else who's hiding in a closet afraid or scared or worried that they're going to be shot, or that their pride flags are going to be burned, or that they are going to be laughed at or called names like faggot and queer in derogatory ways like that, that there are people within this city that care. That there are people all around this city, the majority of this city, cares about those in my community. And that the few stragglers that you hear behind you spouting Bible verses and preaching hate and bigotry, and those that you see up there who claim to be for everyone but are truly only for some, are in the minority. And maybe the gentleman behind me and the councilwoman sitting up there should be reminded of that fact, that they are in the minority.
Let's not address people personally. Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Lori Wilson, Annapolis Park. Yes, Annapolis Park is turning 70 years old. I know, the reason why I know is because I'm 69 and I'll be 70 in July. And I've lived most of my life right there. My mother is 94.
You're not supposed to tell us that.
I beg your pardon?
You're not supposed to tell your age.
Why? I'm not embarrassed. I look good for 70, honey. Black did not crack here. I came from good stock. My roots are great. I don't care. I really don't care who you are, what you are, where you've been, where you're going, because it's not going to affect my life in the littlest or the greatest. I may not walk down a street and wave a flag with you, but I don't care. I have to say, Black History Month has 28 days, and if it's leap year, it's 29. So blacks get the less amount of respect in this country, not just the city, not just this state, but in this country. You guys, like I said, most of y'all don't even know where we are. Thank you, Kevin. Mayor, I have to give you that respect because you earned it. Thank you for having your next listening tour down at Stottlemyre Park. It's not Stottlemyre School. It's Stottlemyre Park. For the people who don't know where that is, that's 4801 Dancy Boulevard in Annapolis Park, where I live, where I have lived, and where I plan to live till the day I go to glory, because that's where I plan on going. But like I said, we got the short end of the stick, and there's no flag, an African flag, hanging up over there for us, okay? And this is what I'm talking about. I don't care just speed humps. We need more speed humps. And I, I am going, I'm going to say that every time I get up here. I ask the police chief out in the lobby, is there any way on those one singular speed hump signs that you can remind the drivers coming down Julius Boulevard 40, 45 miles an hour that the speed is 25? I would prefer you just lie and put 15 there. That'd be great for me, you know? The sidewalks, I hope in the budget somewhere, there is money in there to repair our sidewalks. Like she said, 70 years. We didn't have a little bit of patchwork done here and there, but nothing compared to what's north of Michigan Avenue, okay? So I'm going to advocate for my area. I am going to push for Annapolis Park and Carver Sub, and you can tell me my time's up.
Time is up, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. Thank you. Public comment? Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Anyone else on my left? Yes. Mr. Dacha.
Should I do one of those numbers? Good evening, everybody. This is going to be very short. I think it's rather funny that those of us that have stayed here forgot four words that we all got up and stand, stood for, and looked at the flag, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
Okay, Arthur Warren, City of Westland. In World War II, my father fought on Okinawa under that flag. He was in a segregated army. He fought up under that flag. The black community is not asking to have a flag flown. All the black community is asking for is to be respected under the laws and the ideals that America puts forth, and that should be enough for us. Thank you.
Public comment? Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the administration. Here.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. You know what? I'm going to start with what Lori referenced, Lori Wilson. And I'm going to start with this because I'm really excited about these, and I love doing these. My, my next mayor's listening tour stop, it's probably the number one question I get asked is when's your next listening tour? There's one going on this week, Wednesday. That, what's the date? Wednesday, it's June 5th. It's at Stottlemyre Park, which is in the Annapolis Park subdivision. The address is 4801 Dancy Boulevard, and it's an outdoor event, so dress accordingly. Again, it's Wednesday, June 5th at 5:30 PM at Stottlemyre Park in Westland. Our listening tours are open to the public, and we'd love to have you there. We're going to have our police and fire chiefs there, members of my administration, hopefully members of the city council, if they want to join us, are welcome as well. Great informal talks where you can meet with me personally out and about in the community. We're moving it around to different areas of the city so that everybody has access to their city officials. So I wanted to start with inviting you to that. Next, I want to thank our finance team for all their hard work on our city budget. They spent dozens of hours working on this, and I want to thank all the members of my administration for their input. And I also want to thank city council. I really appreciate all of the, the collaboration, because we, typically in Westland, we do three study sessions. This year, we actually did four, and these are multi-hour meetings where very few members of the community are there. It's mostly just the mayor, my team, and city council members. And we sit there and really fine comb the budget and go through it. And there were a lot of changes that council brought forward that were positive changes. We worked very hard to incorporate all those changes into the budget, and so I do appreciate your support tonight on the budget. And, you know, there's a big commitment to being fiscally responsible there. It maintains $12 million in total fund balance. It integrates the city's six-year financial plan. The fiscal year 2425 general fund budget is $82.3 million. We're the ninth largest city in Michigan, so you've got to spend a lot of money to make a city this big run. $44.8 million of that, so more than half, is for police and fire department operations. And this budget makes a major commitment to our public safety departments. And from my time back when I was a member of the city council to representing us in the State House in Lansing. the state house in Lansing, to now serving as mayor, I've always pushed that importance of public safety in our community here in Westland. It's what the people want. They want those strong police and fire departments. So I thank the council for their commitment to that as well. There are no mileage rate increases. It does incorporate increases in state shared revenue and strategic grant acquisitions including federal safer grant, American Rescue Plan Act money, JAG grant and others to fund city services and infrastructure. If we can get money from other levels of government, we should be using it to lessen the burden on our own taxpayers. It anticipates higher investment income due to higher interest rates in the markets. We're seeing a lot of money come back from city investments. We continue to invest in retiree healthcare and voluntary retiree healthcare cash settlement programs. It includes major investments in our parks, which uses ARPA allocations at Kaylee Park, Carrato Park, Stottlemyre Park and Curtis Woods Parks. So you'll be seeing, you're probably already seeing and you'll be seeing big improvements in those parks. An over $7 million investment to construct a new fire station at the old Hawthorne Valley site, which is Merriman Road just north of Warren. And that's city-owned land. A lot of that is state funds and it's going to be a really beautiful first-rate fire station that'll serve our city really well. It's strategically located and as long as we get that Merriman Road bridge open, they'll be able to use it. And again, I want to remind folks, that's a Wayne County project. Unfortunately, we don't have, we don't have control over the timing on that Merriman Road. I tried to stay away from that topic, but I kind of ran into it. They are using state contractors and they've been having major problems, but we are in constant communication with Wayne County. They're committed to getting that bridge open this year, so sorry for the delay. There's going to be some major investments in investigative technology for our police department. There were strategic department restructurings in building department, planning department, the police department and public services to improve efficiency and improve services and cut costs, frankly. We incorporate a comprehensive six-year capital improvement plan, which includes major and local road projects, water and sewer projects, equipment purchases. That all totals $11.8 million for this budget. And estimates would be $48.5 million in spending over the next six years in investments. The breakdown of the $11.8 million roughly is $2 million on the city's major roads, $3 million on the city's local roads, which is neighborhood streets, 2.7 million on the city's water system, 2.5 million on the city's sanitary system and 1.5 million on equipment for our city workers. So there's a whole lot more details in the budget. We're happy to share that information with the public. I did do some budget updates, which were on our city channel WLND, on our YouTube channel and also on our Facebook page. So I would invite you to check those out because we get into a lot more detail with our directors in that programming. In May, we had a lot of great events. I want to thank everybody who participated in the Memorial Day Parade, the police and fire departments, our DPS, city staff, council members who participated, really took a lot of hands to make that happen and we really do appreciate your participation in that. Thank you. And really, that's for our veterans and for those we've lost in our, in wars overseas. And we have a tradition here of paying homage to our fallen veterans and it's something we're going to continue to do. So I do appreciate, appreciate everybody's input on that. We did a Kids Safety Day event over the weekend. We had our farmer's market open for the season. It's Thursdays, 3 to 7, Central City Park. Beautiful place to gather and enjoy the farmer's market and take a walk. The parks department's doing pickleball and cornhole tournaments. The Mac Mayfield Golf Course is off to a great start for their season. And again, thank you to everybody who's helped with all those, those things. And June, there's going to be a lot of great stuff coming up too. I'm going to highlight a couple of things. It is Pride Month. I know there's a lot of different opinions on that. I believe that Pride Month is not about excluding anybody, it's about being inclusive. We respect you and care for you and appreciate you, no matter who you love and your, your lifestyle and, and your background. So thank you for, to the council for passing the resolution tonight. We appreciate that. Thursday, June 6th is the Westland Garden City Senior Expo. That's actually this week on Thursday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM and it's right here at City Hall. There's going to be a lot of vendors and information for seniors. We invite you to come out. It's open to the public. You don't have to sign up, just show up. I'll try to stop in and say hello during the workday on Thursday. Again, the farmer's market's open 3 to 7 on Thursday. This Friday, June 7th, the Salvation Army's Moms Baby Shower is from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM at the Salvation Army at 2300 South Vanoy Road. This coming Saturday, June 8th, is Relay for Life from 11:00 AM to midnight at Central City Park. That's always a great event. And also the All-American Wayne Road Cruises that day, which is on Wayne Road from Joy, our border with Livonia, all the way to Glenwood, our border with Wayne. So the whole length of Joy Road is the car cruise. It's also a really cool event. I love the old classic cars and seeing that stuff. 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM this Saturday. Also this Saturday, busy day, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM is the Westland Police Department and Inkster Police Department Faith Blue and Summer Fun 2 at Yosemite Baptist Church. So that's a kind of a summer party at the church. Yosemite Baptist Church is at 29066 Eaton Street, which is off Middle Belt between Annapolis and Van Born. And that's going to be a great event. I'll be over there too. And then Wednesday, June 12th, is movie night at Central City Park. Attendees, this is a family event. It's a lot of great stuff for the kids there. I think police and fire will be there. I think they have a bounce house. Obviously, they have a movie playing. Attendees will enjoy free hot dogs, popcorn and water. The splash pad will be free from 5 to 8:00 PM. There will also be a children's entrepreneur farmer's market and the movie begins at 7:00 PM. So we have a lot going on, as you can see, almost on a daily basis here in the city. Again, I want to thank our city staff. They work really hard to make these things happen. I actually didn't know how hard these people work until I became mayor, watching them in action every day. It's really impressive. So I just, again, want to thank our city staff for all their hard work. That's all I have tonight and thank you again, city council, for your support.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the city terms?
Just a couple of comments. The mayor's coming about how hard these directors work. They remind me of ducks. Real quiet on the water, paddling like crazy down below the water. So they do a lot of hard work you don't see. But two quick things, I thought maybe one of our veterans would bring this up, but June 14th is Flag Day, Stars and Stripes. So I wanted to remind folks when Flag Day is. Second is, if you will, a point of personal privilege. Some of you may know my wife is a retired military officer. She's there, served 36 years, retired as Brigadier General. She was a nurse. And as Jim knows, I really married up. But what I'm really proud of and want to mention to our veterans and folks here in Canton is that the, I'm sorry, Westland. I was thinking of the Canton Seabok.
You're fired.
Wrong city.
The VA Ann Arbor Hospital last week named its new women's clinic, the Brigadier General Carol Anne Foson Women's Clinic. So it's a really nice honor. I'm very proud of her and all the work that she's done as a military officer, a nurse and a veterans advocate. So I just wanted to pass it along. Thanks.
All right, we will begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilman Wishart.
Actually, good evening, everyone. I know everyone's not a fan of the Pride Month, but it's important to recognize everyone's freedoms. I want everyone to have freedom in this country, whatever direction it looks like, whether happy with it, disappointed with it, et cetera. And there's a lot of comments about the flag. Please remember, the flag's always on top, no matter what it is, sporting events, along those lines, the US flag is always on top and it always should be on top. One more small note, it is men's health, mental health month. Please reach out to, gentlemen, you guys know, men tend to suffer in silence a lot more than we think. And that just asking them the question, are you okay? If they look down, it goes a long way. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Sometimes I wonder if I'm actually, can be eloquent in my words. I don't know, I don't always think I can. I'm going to read the first couple of paragraphs of the resolution because I just want, I have no problem with this part at all. And I, and I, and I want, oh, let me clarify that. I have no problem with it at all and I'll explain what I mean. But it starts off, "Whereas the city of Westland cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas all are welcome in the city of Westland to live, work, play, and every family in any shape deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy and supported by friends and neighbors and..." And this is the law. "...whereas the city of Westland denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles." That's law. That is an amazing place to live when I, when I read those things. And my concerns, and I don't want to go beyond, is, has to do with the fact that all, and I guess where I'm going to go with this is that when we think about one month, I don't want to think about one group for one month. I don't want to think about mothers for one day. I don't want to think about just black history on 28 or 29 days. We, I think we need to look at this a little bit and say, how do we incorporate it into our daily lives? I did go to the MML with council president and I did speak on DEI and I actually very clearly said that this is not, this cannot be something we do occasionally. If we're showing love and compassion, it is every day. And if we just relegate things to a month or a day sometimes, we forget. I told my kids, I said, I don't want Mother's Day, I want Mother's Year. I want 365 days. And I know there's this tradition of doing this and that's what it turns out to be. It looks like a tradition of doing something that really isn't reaching the results that we want it to reach. It's not reaching the love, it's not reaching the compassion, it's not reaching even the inclusivity that we are talking about. So ultimately, that's where my concerns are, not about one group or another group. With regard to the flag, I am very concerned. I can tell you that in Ottawa County, there's discussion about raise, about, there's discussion, because they actually had, at a commission meeting, they actually had the Satanic Temple come and do the prayer. And those are those things that we're like, okay, are we going to open the door so that things that we don't want? I don't want a Christian flag flown on this city. I don't. Because if I thought that that was going to change hearts and minds, great, but I don't. I don't want flags that you traditionally would say I would, maybe people think I would like would be, don't tread on me. But there's a lot of flags I don't want raised on my, in my city. It doesn't stop free speech, it doesn't stop any of that. So I just, I just want to make sure that I clarify what that means is that if we just look at it as one month anyway, are we really achieving what we want when it comes to the compassion that we talk about and sharing the love? I don't want discrimination. I don't want any of the things that I, we've been told, okay, historically you've done this. We've got to stop that by all means. And we can't have that, and we can't have that. But I think it can look different. That being said, I do want to recognize that this is also PTSD Awareness Month. As someone who's actually very familiar with PTSD, I am very concerned when I, you know, I want people to know what it is. And it's something that, it is a lifetime. People can actually recover for a period, but then something, even if they don't even try, triggers it and they have to deal with it. And then it is behind, it's behind eyes. It, you don't see it, okay? You're not going to see when someone's suffering with mental health. And I mentioned this before and other things. So PTSD Awareness Month is June. Also, June is Sacred Heart of Jesus Month, a time to remember what Jesus, you know, what Jesus did for us and the, and the love that he had for his, for people. And I was also notified, it is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. So I do want to just bring those months up here because if we're going to be recognizing that, you know, I, I did not sit there and put a resolution up for all these different months, I realize that. But it is important that we actually do look at these things. So with that, I'm glad the budget passed. I think it's a, I am glad that we actually passed that budget and I am looking forward to more conversations. I challenged, I actually, you know, said, we need to figure out how we can like take $12 million off, $12 million savings for the people. I don't know if we're going to get there, but at the, at the end of the day, we, it'll be good to have these conversations and make sure that we are using the public's money, the tax, tax money for the city properly. So with that, I am going to thank, say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
I didn't even prepare. No, I wanted to congratulate Jim Foson also for Carol Anne and Brigadier General Carol Anne Foson's wing at the hospital. I haven't given up my dream of getting the urinal. It's Sergeant James Walter Hart urinal, so I mean, it'll be in that wing too, but I'm still got my hopes up. I know she can put in a word for me. Other than that, yeah, I'm happy we got, this budget's been looming over us. We've been working over it for a while, you know? So I think we all just want to do something that's financially good, but you know, we do have some requirements to get it passed today and I do remember, I remember I thought we had to vote on it, but it had to be done, but clarification says otherwise, but with the mayor's commitment that we'll work together to find that other 318,000, I'll hold him to it. So. Yep, you did. So beyond that, I'm glad I saw everybody at the Memorial Day Parade. As I committed, I did go to Great Lakes the day after with my family and that's always a special and painful day, but next year, if anybody wants to go with me too. So we're always nice to walk by, visit a few stones and I'll leave a penny for them. That means a lot to them. You might not know it, but it does. Thank you again for my colleagues and thank you for seeing all of you. We'll, we'll see you later.
Okay. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you to council for passing the budget. Thank you to the mayor for continuing to work with us and try to make this perfect for the city. I know it's very hard and stressful for all of us, but we'll get through it together. I want to thank everyone that came out to Kids Safety Day. That was a really great event. I look for it, look forward to it every year. And I did make a request to the mayor that we need to get the police department a bounce house. My son wants Chase. So thank you for that. Also, it was Officer Kelly's birthday, so happy birthday to Officer Kelly.
37.
I thought you said 24.
No, she's.
Oh, all right.
She had a 10.
Yeah, I know. I'm just messing with you. The mayor covered all the events I had here. Also, I want to speak on Pride Month, you know? Pride Month is more than, like you said, doesn't fix the problem. But personally, I believe it tells, it lets people know that we do care. And that's all most people want to say, hey, I do care. Mental health is one of those things where, hey, I care. And I think by recognizing Pride Month, at least we're telling the community that are scared to come out or unsure that we care. And that's the message I want to give out is that I see you and I care. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you. I'm, I am too glad that we got this budget moving along and I look forward to the opportunity to sit down again and continue to make improvements. But you know, as long as we're moving in a forward direction for Westland, that's the most important thing. And I think we are on the road to doing that this evening. In regards to the resolution that was passed, I, I've read it. It doesn't make any mention of a flag. It doesn't make any mention of a flag. So that argument needs to sit aside. But what I do want to say about the month for my, my friends and loved ones in the LGBTQI community is that in June and in every day, you are seen, you are loved, you are valued and you are safe with me. Rights and love aren't pie. There's enough for everyone. Good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Really was. It was very beautiful. You know, I found it really important to bring this up and reason being... You know, I found it really important to bring this up, and reason being is that acceptance sometimes is difficult, especially for those that are struggling. Members of the community don't always feel safe, and as my colleague said, this month allows them to feel safe. This month allows them to feel as if they're heard. You know, I had, I have a family member that, that was in this community, and it took them a long time to come out, and it took them a long time to get their confidence, it really did. And I think that it's really important as someone that feels as if everyone should be loved and accepted, and everyone should be treated equally, that I felt Westland, what better place than Westland? We're not the only community that does this, there's many other communities that celebrate. In some ways, they celebrate with parades, they celebrate with raising of the flag, they celebrate with large events. So I, I just want to let you know, there was not a raising of the flag. There is a flag out there, I'm sorry if it offends you, but I'm happy to see it there. So that's, that's my opinion, and I support the community. I just wanted to also congratulate the Class of 2024. I have numerous family members that recently graduated, over the past, I would say, week or, or better. The Class of 24 was, was popping up, I, Wayne Westland, we have private schools, we have Livonia, we have Romulus, we have Taylor, there's many different school districts in Westland. But I just wanted to let you know that I wanted to wish you my congratulations. I'm going to be a graduating mom in 2025, my son's going to be graduating next year, so I'll probably be up here a ball of muss, as I wish congratulations to my baby. But I just want to let you know that college is not always an option for some. It could be you're, you're taking a gap year, it could be you're traveling, it could be you're going into the, the service, or you, you could just say, hey, I'm just going to go right to work. But I wanted to wish you good luck in whatever you choose, and if you ever need any advice, I'm sure you could speak with any of us on our journey, so. Wanted to also mention about the Memorial Day Parade. Dan Statchow was the commentator again, so thank you so much for that, I was able to participate in the parade. I know that, you know, a lot of my colleagues were here too, and it was really a great day to see the, the community out there, and the ceremony was very nice as well, too. I wanted to plug for Maryam, the Relay for Life is this weekend, so there's going to be a ton of stuff going on, it's already been highlighted, but she wanted just me to mention that this is going from 11:00 AM till midnight, and there's going to be a luminary ceremony, a first responders lap, I think at 1:00 if I'm not mistaken as well, too, but all proceeds were going to benefit American Cancer Society. It was mentioned about the Wayne Road Cruise. For those of you that may have not heard, Edward Nicholson was a very big part of this event, Don Nicholson's son, who was part of the Wayne Road Cruise, and they have a special emblem, a Batman symbol honoring Edward. So I think this, this is going to be a very special cruise for the Nicholson family, and very emotional as well, too. I know it's been mentioned about faith blues and summer fun, too, so I know that's going to be on Saturday in addition to the Relay for Life, so it's going to be a very busy weekend, hopefully I can stop by both of them, and travel baseball game, it's crazy summer. And then the wheelchair event, I know that was mentioned already, but this is going to be a very, very, very important event. It's going to be absolutely free on June 13th from 2:00 to 7:00. So the city's going to be partnering up with Mobility City of Metro Detroit, so I think, Ray, that you did mention this, but this is a really great testament that the city of Westland is offering, offering those in that disability group to, to come and get your wheelchair check and offer that opportunity here at City Hall. So I'm really excited that it is taking place, and hopefully we'll continue to do more of these events. As I already mentioned about Kids Safety Day, and I wanted just to address a few things on the budget, I won't be long, I know it's, it's been an interesting discussion, excuse me. So one of the things that I had mentioned, these are just my comments specifically, is about the leaf pickup program and where things are going to go with the leaf pickup program. I don't think we've fully decided. So those residents that are at home and watching, the leaf pickup program is, is, we are not really sure the status of it, but it is, I think, in consideration. And then also to Neighborhood Services, my biggest concern was making sure we have ordinance officers and having ordinance officers that are out. So I talked to the mayor at the study session, I'm going to grab a quick, mouth is getting so dry. I talked to the mayor about adding another employer body, and it looks like we're going to work with MSB and talk with them to see if that's even an option, or if even needed. For the commissioners that are in the audience, I had asked, originally we said, hey, we need to give them a raise, so now the commissioners will be getting $100, so I had, it's, it's a start, Ms. Wilson. So I had asked, okay, 75, what would the benefit be for 100? So our commissioners are the lowest paid at their $60 level, so now they're going to be bumping up to 100. So I was very adamant to make sure that you are recognized for your time, and we do really appreciate you for being on boards and commission. Also, too, I had a question about the WLND contract. Our, our employees are absolutely fantastic that work for WLND, so hopefully in the future, we just want to make sure that they're getting paid appropriately. The mayor is working with the interim director to make sure that they're paid well, and I know that we're making sure that they're well taken care of. So again, these are just a few of my comments and a few updates as well, too. I know that when you guys look at the budget, sometimes you don't see every line item, so I wanted just to be, just going through a few of the line items, just so you understand at least what my questions were and my concerns. So with that being said, I know our next meeting is Monday, June 17th, there's a lot in the community, so I'm sure we'll see each other before then. But if you need to reach me, you can reach out to me on my personal page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, or my cell phone number, 734-637-2078. Thank you, be kind to each other, we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I want to start, I guess I'll just start with the budget. I will let everybody know I'm putting a, you know, just a kind of a PowerPoint together that I did last year on my Facebook page to share with regards to breaking down the budget. What I did last year is I put together a breakdown of all the millage rates that you all as residents and taxpayers pay in taxes, so you can see kind of where the money goes, where your tax dollars are going, not only to the city, but also the school district, the DIA, the zoo millage, all of those things that your tax dollars are broken down to. I also provided, based on the work that the administration put in, in last year's breakdown that I did, like kind of each department, how many employees we have, what the total budget is. I think the more transparency we can have around the budget, the better. I certainly really appreciate what the mayor's been doing with the WLND shows about the budget, I think that's great. I think the more access that you as residents have to your budget, because it is your tax dollars and ultimately your budget, the better. So the more information you have about it from all different sources, the mayor's office, council, online at citywestland.com, I think the better it is going to be, because ultimately, it's not our budget, it is your budget and your tax dollars that are being spent in there. I just want to make sure, as the leader of this council, that everybody on this body always feels heard and always feels that their questions get addressed when it comes to the budget or when it comes to anything, and that they don't feel that they have to make a rush or rash decision. I am appreciative of everybody's input with, at the budget study sessions. They got probably more spirited at points than they should have, and I want to make sure that everybody feels heard and valued, and that when they are, are speaking, it is their turn to speak and be heard. And I appreciate some of the questions that we've had in the past, actually getting, you know, addressed this year, getting the org chart from the administration, thank you for that. I think that's been something that we've asked for, for several years. I think we'd like a little bit more information in terms of the employee breakdown, but I certainly appreciate getting some of that information and more that the administration was able to provide for us. The investments that this budget made in public safety, building off of budgets in years past, in particular with the fire department, being able to bring over, you know, guys that were on, men and women that were on the Safer Grant onto full-time positions. We still have some work to go there, but we want to make sure that at some point, all of our firefighters are working, not on a federal Safer Grant, but as City of Westland employees with permanent positions. Because when you work on a grant, you're only working until the grant runs out, and then you wonder, do I still have a job? And we want to eliminate that insecurity and make sure that all of our men and women in the fire department are full-time City of Westland employees. We also have a cops grant in the police department, we haven't hired up yet to that number to be able to use the grant, so everybody that we're hiring still is going to be a full-time city employee in the Westland Police Department. This budget does make some other investments that I won't get into specifically with regards to the police department, but some, some good and I think necessary investments for our City of Westland Police Department. This is the first budget that includes a Assistant Parks and Rec Director position, so I'm glad that we're able to support Director Mulligan with additional staffing. If you go out and look at neighboring communities, Canton Township, Dearborn, heck, even smaller communities like Romulus, and you look at their Parks and Rec staff, they have, you know, six, eight, 10, 12 plus people on their staff. We were asking Kyle to operate on kind of a shoestring budget and with a shoestring staff. It was Kyle and a clerical staff and not much else. And once we had, you know, closed the Bailey Center, we had gone through the economic downturn, we had really kind of shrunk down our Parks and Rec staff. So council is working with the administration, I know it's been a, a big commitment for all of us on council, a commitment for the mayor to really add additional Parks and Rec services here in the community, and by adding that position with the assistant there with Jackie Smith in this year's budget, I think is a, a big win for the residents in our community. I agree with my colleague, and this is something that I think all of us have brought up year in and year out, ordinance enforcement in the city needs improvement. I think many of you drive around the city, and you look at your neighbor's grass is three feet high, your neighbor who's got a hole in their roof with a tarp over it, the car that doesn't move for weeks at a time, and we need more ordinance officers so we can have a more proactive ordinance department to make sure that our business districts, and most of all, our neighborhoods that we all live in, look great. So that is definitely a conversation that I think we all have the appetite to having, and I thank my colleague for, for bringing that up. You know, she also mentioned the boards and commission members, too. I think that's been a long time coming, Ms. Wilson has brought that up year after year. Each of the four years that I've been on council, that has been brought up, what are we doing about it? Well, we are, you know, finally going to do something about that. The other conversation I think that we need to have, you know, moving forward, is around the community development block grant funding. We started that conversation this year, but it's a, it's a two-pronged approach. Number one, I think we have to look at the public safety portion of CDBG and where that money's coming out of. And number two, there are community groups like the Norway Community Citizens Council who want and have requested funding come out of the CDBG area. That is a, a vital group in our community that operates within the largest CDBG area in our community, the Norway Community Citizens Council. And they do great advocacy for the Norway community and beyond. They run numerous events every year, from the Family Jamboree, to the Fall Harvest Festival, to the Christmas event, to the back-to-school event where they're giving out free supplies and backpacks for kids. So if we can find a way, because they operate within CDBG, to fund those community groups with the CDBG funding, that is a conversation that certainly, you know, we need to have here as we move forward as well, because CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funding, should be funding low-income, working-class, working poor people in programs that will lift up and benefit those individuals in the community. Few other things before I get to my final comment about pride. I had the chance to attend the Michigan Municipal League Training Seminar with my colleagues, Councilwoman Bowman, Councilman Wishart. You know, that's a great opportunity to continue learning and growing my knowledge base as your elected official, and so I was glad to be able to attend the MML event in Mount Pleasant with my two colleagues. And as my colleague mentioned, DEI was one of the topics that, you know, her and I got to present on, and something that is, you know, we were both very excited and welcomed the opportunity from the Michigan Municipal League to present on. So I thank her, you know, contribution on that. I want to thank everybody that organized and put together the Memorial Day Parade, you know, from Dan Statchow and our Parks Director Mulligan, and all the veterans groups that organized and participated in it. Thank you for putting it together. I will say one thing, and I was going to talk to Kyle about this on a sidebar, but I, I do want to make note that this is a remembrance and honoring ceremony. And marching in this event with political banners is not what this is about. And so I would make note to Director Mulligan for next year that any group that wishes to march in it can do so as a remembrance and honoring of our fallen servicemen and women, not to promote a particular party cause or anything like that, because that is not what this event is supposed to be about. And I hope that we can get back to that next year without any banners or politicking in the event itself. We are in power outage season, so just want to let you know that my colleague and I have been working for a couple of months to try to get ahold of the Community Affairs Representative for DTE to set up a public meeting. The last time that she had collaborated with the previous administration to organize a public town hall, DTE did not show up, even though they were asked to show up. So we are hoping to get DTE here for some kind of public study session, because we know that all of you deserve answers. Westland has historically, I know myself and my colleague, Councilman Hornbuckle, live about seven houses down from each other, our neighborhood and neighborhoods across Westland have experienced frequent power outages. We've already had one check the box this year, and we know that there are residents that are out for days at a time and multiple times per year. So we have been working diligently, Pro Tem Sampe and I, to try and get a meeting with DTE that is open to the public, just to get all of you some answers on what they're doing to upgrade our grid and our infrastructure, and to, you know, to hold them to account ultimately, because they have no problem running to the Michigan Public Service Commission and asking for rate hikes on all of us, but when we request a public meeting, then it's like, well, we don't know if we have the time for you. But they always have, they always have a lobbyist to set up there in Lansing when it's time to get more money or request rate hikes on all of us. And that is something that we, as your elected officials, need to do a job at every level on this council and above, holding DTE to account. Want to thank the Westland Police and Fire Departments for the Family Safety Day. This was a great event. I know Officer Kelly, our community police officer, put a lot of work into coordinating and organizing this event, a lot of families out to learn about car seat safety and how to properly strap and buckle in their kids into the car. We had the fire department out there showing CPR safety, first aid, letting kids get in the fire truck. So I want to thank Officer Kelly, the police department, fire department for putting on a great event, and all the community business partners that came out as well, offering a lot of great information and tips. Thank you for, you know, participating that. And every family that came out, I know many people on council were there, myself, Pro Tem Sampe, Councilman Hornbuckle was there as well, the mayor. So glad that everybody was able to come out and participate in that. As was mentioned, I think the last meeting, and as we just had this a week ago, our Senior Services Director Barb Markup did retire. I want to thank her for her long and outstanding service to the City of Westland. I was at work, unfortunately able to make the retirement event, but I want to thank the administration for honoring Barb and, and putting that on. I think it was a great event, I know several of my colleagues were there as well. And then I want to welcome our new Senior Services Director, Beth Welkenbach here. I know she will do an outstanding job, and she was a great pick by the mayor for that position, and she will serve our seniors, as she's already done for many years, here in the City of Westland. Garage sale weekend, I hope we can have a free garage sale weekend, I've had a couple of residents reach out about that, so I'll be just asking the administration about when and if we will have a garage sale weekend. And then, last but not least, you know, I talked about Pride Month when we debated the resolution and kind of gave some insight on why we celebrate Pride Month, but I want to briefly touch on why I celebrate Pride Month. It was mentioned by one of my colleagues, and it was mentioned by members of the audience, that some people don't feel comfortable coming out, and don't feel comfortable with who they are. And I can tell you that I was one of those people for many, many years. I can tell you the first time, sophomore year of high school, that I knew that I was bisexual, that I figured out, oh, I have an attraction to men and women, boys and girls at the time in high school. And there was no way in heck that I was going to be coming out in high school, given the bullying I received in general about my perceived sexual orientation, and given how kids in school at that time, at Canton High School, who were openly identified as LGBTQIA or perceived to even be gay or bisexual or lesbian or, or transgender, were treated. perceived to even be gay or bisexual or lesbian or, or transgender, were treated. And so Pride Month for me is personal, because it took me a long time to be comfortable in my skin and who I was and how I wanted to live my life and who I wanted to love. You know, I was one of those people that came out later in life. I was not someone who came out in high school. It was a different era then. And we use Pride Month and we should use every month, as my colleague acknowledged, to make people in this city and beyond feel welcome. Everyone, whether you're a member of the LGBTQI community or any marginalized community or minority community. So with that, thank you all for coming here tonight. If you need anything from me, you can always reach me on my cell phone at 734-890-2146. As a reminder, on my city council page, Councilman Mike McDermit, I will be putting a budget update together. Thank you again to all of my colleagues for a good spirited debate on the budget. Thank you to the administration for putting this budget together, all the hard work that went into that. And with that, as my colleague said and as Ray always acknowledges, please treat each other with kindness and respect. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So far.